Early in the month and it's just too early.
Call the meeting to order. Sorry. Sorry, roll call please.
Ms. Arcomando?
Present.
Ms. Borelli?
Present.
Mr. Ochello?
Present.
Ms. Iannello?
Present.
Mr. Laurentino?
Present.
Ms. Roloff?
Here.
Ms. Torbick?
Present.
Ms. Traverso?
Here.
Ms. Adorelli?
Here.
Rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Not this one. Here's the other one. Don't I have to read the... Don't I have to read something? There it is, okay, sorry. You usually have it here. Okay. No, that's not it. This one. Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. Are we going... We're not doing presentations tonight. You have a presentation tonight? We're doing... You're gonna do that now?
What presentation?
Okay. That's a... Are you doing it? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over for the budget presentation.
Okay, if the board members don't mind transitioning over to the chairs, Mr. Karati and myself will present the 2025-2026 budget.
Here we go. I left my water in there. I left everything in there.
Me too. My food is special.
Trying to trick me. We're all good presentations on Monday night.
This is very important stuff. It's at least an hour and a half.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody. So, Mr. Karati, our business administrator, and myself, Mrs. Valetti, we're going to present the 2025-2026 proposed budget. On this slide, you'll see the names of the members of our Board of Education, the one with asterisks, served on our budget committee. There you go.
Okay, so the budget... Oh, all right. The slide before said that there was a statute that the budget... You need to submit a balanced budget. The revenues, you have to equal the appropriations. And on the next slide, you'll see that we are at a little over $47 million, and that covers our three funds, our general, special revenue, debt service funds. The general fund is our operating budget. And the budget process begins in November. You know, we're a couple of months into the new school year, and we're building the budget for the following year. So, we give it to the administrators. They're building their end. They get it done around December, turn it over to us. And then sometime late January or February, we start meeting with the budget committee. In March, we approved the tentative budget, submitted all the documentation to the county office, and on April 4th, they approved our budget. And it brings us to tonight. You have to hold a public hearing on the budget, and that's why we'll have an open session just for the public to come and ask questions. We'll adopt the budget on Wednesday. This slide just had me to go through it, but this slide defines some of our revenue sources, local, state, and federal, and the different areas that monies can come into the district. As I said before, the total budget of $47 million is composed of three funds. The general fund is the bulk of it, is our operating fund where all the salaries and benefits are. Then we have a special revenue fund, which is where all the federal, state, and local grants, like the SBEF, that where that money flows through. And our debt service fund, which is our bonds. We do referendums and other financing arrangements. That's where we pay principal and interest like your mortgage. So, there are three funds, three separate buckets. You've got to keep all the different monies in. And what the budget committee faces, and I think everybody here is... The board members have been on the budget committee at one time or another. Most of the budget is pretty much fixed already. Once the contracts get settled for salaries and benefits of the earlier bargaining groups, that's the bulk of the money. Then you have special ed costs, utilities, insurance, professional services, leasing, financing arrangements. You know, we're looking at 95% of the budget, so there's not much to make cuts from. The general fund, our revenue, the district's revenue sources are mostly from tax levy. You'll see in the chart I have later on that close to almost 90% comes from the residents, comes from taxes. And that is capped at 2% unless you have, with mechanisms within your budget, for enrollment, health costs, and if you had any bank cap, you could exceed that 2%, which I'll go through, which we did. The next area is state aid. We have... The state is fully... Almost fully funding the state aid formula. They capped districts that could go up 6% or had a decrease of 6%. Luckily, we got some more funds, but it's not, again, not fully funded, but we're getting close to it. That's our next highest revenue source. And then we used, from our reserve accounts, that we put money aside in June at our June meeting. If there's any balances remaining, we put them into our two other buckets. Is maintenance reserve for routine maintenance. That's, you know, regular repairs to the district. And then the capital reserve is for more capital. Larger expenditures, like when you're replacing, like, a whole section of windows, replacing a roof. That's where that money comes from. So, that got added to our budget. We're able to do some more projects. This just states again what I was just... What I just said, that where income... Where our monies come from, the general fund, and then what funds you can use, the long-range capital reserve money and the maintenance reserve funds. And this pie chart is a little dork, but it shows the... Most of it is tax levy, almost 89%. State aid, like I said before, 8.3 of our total budget. And the other one, which, on this year, it's what I have before, almost $900,000 of coming from reserves. So, but the majority of the budget every year is in the high 80s to 90% is from taxes. And on the budget side or appropriations side, as you can see, most of the money is spent on the classroom, instructional, support services, that's, you know, guidance, child study team, and all their salaries and benefits, everything that has to do with the students in the classroom. And then the other groups are on the left, they're broken out. So, there's just a list of all our buildings that we maintain, and one on the left side, besides our five school buildings. We're gonna have next year go on... Well, actually, this year, but start of the next fiscal year. Cooler School, which will be the Board of Ed offices now need... Well, I mean, it's got totally renovated now, but there's still maintenance and utilities there, so there's a cost there. And our fields remain the same. So, next two slides go through some of the maintenance projects, where I had the money coming from maintenance reserve or capital reserve. These are some of the items that we're gathering quotes now and looking to approve. We have a lot of things that are district-wide, like tile abatement, which is in the classroom, there's asbestos tile. You know, all of it's pretty much intact. We just keep trying to maintain it and also try to remove it. So, we do it... They're called tile abatement products. We'll remove the asbestos out of the room and get new tiles put in. Ceiling lighting upgrades. High school and long school, we finished the gym floors. Again, we do HVAC, concrete repairs, replace pipes, valves. And everybody knows, you know, making your own repairs in your own house, that things are costly. So, yes, this does add up to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the next slide continues the project, showing that we're going to renovate some of the larger ones. Faculty bathrooms at long school, we pretty much have redone them at all the buildings. And we need to do long school. Also, long school, we're gonna finally remove the paw print that's on the gym floor and replace it. Continue to upgrade water fountains. We're going to upgrade the playgrounds at the elementary schools with equipment and hopefully a new play surface. We'll make them all even, stop using the rubber mulch and the wood mulch. The athletic, now that the field's all done, the athletic track is seeing some more repairs. So, the company recommended putting a top coat on it. It's not a full replace and redo. It's just putting a top coat on, it'll be a blue track. But also, we're gonna add... We want to add, now they have running zones, like these will be three-colored running zones. And they'll be in our, you know, blue track with those yellow zones. And I think it'll look really good. And we're looking to convert a large area, large storage room here for instructional space. We're working on that. It might be cost prohibitive, but we have in the budget. And if we're able to do it, we'll do it. If we can't, we'll, you know, come back to you and explain why. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Valetti.
Okay, so these are a sample of items that are included in this proposed budget. First, Amplify Grade Four. So, we've had such success in Amplify for grades K to 3, that next school year, we are going to add it to our grade four curriculum as well. We actually... We have many districts, almost... I feel like it's almost a district every two weeks that comes to observe our teachers teach the Amplify program. Then you'll see some kindergarten tables and chairs. That would be for long school. Our two kindergarten classrooms have mismatched tables and chairs, so we're looking to get them new ones, as kindergarten is the welcoming to those buildings. And Franklin School, one of the classrooms, is in need of new tables and chairs. Battle of the Books, we're gonna continue that at the middle school. Our media library specialist here does a fabulous job with it. So, those are the materials for that. One of our buildings, Smith School, is... Needs a new conference table and chairs for all their data team meetings that they've been having this school year. High school Spanish curriculum. Apparently, it's not curriculum program. That should say program. Apparently, it's been a couple of years since we've had a solid high school Spanish program that our teachers are able to use as a resource. So, that's included for next school year. A new step and repeat at our middle school, high school, because the one that we currently have is aging. Instructional materials across the district, iPads. Some of the iPads are for, you know, our special education students that require an iPad for communication purposes, but these are actually for our staff to use, so that way we can transition to digital testing, as opposed to using the paper testing for our child study team evaluations. Book break subscription, that's for the middle school, high school. And it's a video subscription where authors will do virtual meetings with the students, the whole virtual sessions with students. Classroom rugs, easels, and bookshelves across our elementary building. Aviation supplies. We're really focusing on using our drones that we purchased for next school year. And with the program that we have, the AOPA program, they're able... Our students are able to actually sit for their drone license, as well as their pilot license, at the end of the program, after, I believe it's two or three years completely. But we are really excited to continue that program and hoping that our students are on board, so that they can fly our drones over our buildings and our fields, and we can really get some great aerial shots. Whiteboard tables. Some of our... Many of our classrooms are now transitioning to whiteboard tables, so the students can do their work right on, you know, right on the table or the desk. So, this particular one is for Smith School. They started in their small group sections in the back of their classrooms. They started purchasing whiteboard tables last year, so we're going to continue that. Increasing summer hours for our high school guidance counselors. We are doubling the number of hours that they're working over the summer. And that's because there's so much work that needs to get done in the summer. And we're finding that in the fall, we're running into a lot of problems. A lot of schedules aren't completed. A lot of changes need to be made. So, the hope is by increasing their summer hours, they're able to connect with our students and our families before the school year starts, and that way we hopefully start off nice and clean. Curriculum writing. We always have to update our curriculum every school year. Our middle school math program. That's because our K to 6 students have one program, and our 9 through 12 students have a program, and 7th and 8th have been using a completely different program that has a different mentality and mindset to it. So, we are going... We are looking to purchase a middle school math program for our 7th and 8th graders that are in alignment with the other grade levels. A furniture kit for our kiln that's here at the middle school, high school. That's Mr. Hill's classroom for the ceramics. A bubble tube and swing, that's for Washington School, for our indoor playground area that we have there for our preschool students. And it's one of those bubble tubes that's sensory oriented and one of those swings that cuddles you. Playground recess toys across our elementary buildings. Continuation of programs. So, these are all programs that we're using, we're finding success with across the district. You'll see them all listed there. Some of them are our new electives that we started this year. Our sports marketing, social media. Those programs are for those courses. Alex is a math program for our high school, that they use an online program. Partial funding of our middle school, high school spring musical. Continued funding for extracurricular activities and athletics. We are on a plan for our one-to-one program, where we're purchasing new Chromebooks for all 5th and 9th grade students, and then recycling the old ones to the younger grades. Upgrading wireless access points and network equipment. So, we're finding, across the district, that we were having some slow spots or some troubled Wi-Fi areas. So, we are going to look to upgrade our entire network across the district and our wireless access points. And that way, we can hopefully, with all the increase in technology that we're seeing across our district, this will hopefully help solve the problem. Right now, our network closets are somewhat of a mess, and so our technology department has been working to kind of figure out what goes where and how we can improve our network system across the district. So, we're excited about that. Our COPS grant. I'll talk a little bit more about grants, but we do owe a portion of the COPS grant, which I will talk about later. Continued funding for antivirus backups, licensing, student databases. So, when you have a one-to-one initiative, and every student has a Chromebook, has a device, you need all these other items that go along with it. So, that's what that is. Upgrades to playgrounds, I'll talk about that with one of our grants. Electric vehicles. I believe we are definitely looking to purchase one maintenance electric vehicle and maybe two. Concrete replacements and repairs, definitely along the middle school, high school, we're gonna continue. We started doing the sidewalk, we're going to continue. A repeat of LMS faculty bathrooms, recoating of the track. Awning at Smith School, so that way, at the front of Smith School, everyone is aware that that's the main entrance. And painting of the exterior walls at Smith. All right. New staffing for next school year. A full-time special education teacher at the middle school, high school. This is going to be for both our MD program here at the middle school, high school, because we are growing. And in, not next school year, but the following school year, we'll need to start an 18 to 21 program. But it's also going to be to teach some LLD classrooms as well, classes here in this building as well. A full-time special education teacher at the elementary building. That's to satisfy the requirements per our students' IAPs. High school math teacher. That's because math has not been historically our strong point here in Saddle Brook. So, we are looking... We're looking for a high school math teacher. And that way, we can really focus on smaller class sizes and then also dividing Algebra I into two parts, like part A and part B, and really having our students have a strong foundational skill set as they move forward. And middle school world language teacher. We currently only have one world language teacher, Spanish teacher, for our middle school, 7th and 8th grades. And our current 7th graders, I believe, one of the grade levels, I believe it's 7th, they get pulled out of PE to have Spanish a couple of times a week, as opposed to sitting for a semester or a school year. So, that's what that position will enable us to accomplish. And then also, as our students enter high school, they'd be able theoretically to begin Spanish II, and then end with AP Spanish theoretically. Back to you.
So, all this stuff comes with a price tag. Yeah, why don't we get a little bit... I get a little... Tony gets all the fun parts of the budget. So, again, with the back to the general fund, you know, it's a large number, 6.89. However, in there was those transfer from reserves, so that makes it higher as well. So, it equates to a school tax levy of 2.88. And the calendar year is 3.42. So, what that equates to, at an average house, next year, or this year, it'll be assessed at $473,300. Is projected to increase $277, or 76 more per day for the average house. And we're back to Ms. Valetti.
So, Mr. Karati and myself were speaking about how we do apply for grants every school year, and we don't really talk enough about them. So, we wanted to take a moment to share with our community all the works that we do with grants. So, to start with, we have our federal title grants. So, we have Title I, II, III, and IV. Title I is for our school buildings that qualify based on free and reduced lunch numbers. And those funds are used to enhance your basic instruction, to supplement. You can't take the place of anything, but you can supplement. Then we have... Title II is for professional development for teachers, in the instructional side of our programs. Title III is for our multilingual learners, our English language learners, and their instruction and development. And Title IV is for well-rounded student performance and academic growth. So, it's like a general, overall title funds that we're able to use for our buildings. Our COPS grant that we did receive, this is what we are currently using. We purchased additional... Or we're going to purchase additional cameras with it. We have purchased door access, those were recently installed, and new intercoms at each of our buildings were recently installed. We are also looking to purchase an updated PA system for the middle school, high school. We're getting quotes for that as part of this grant. Visitor management system. So, we did have the iPads have been delivered, and those are going to be installed soon, where every visitor has to scan their ID, does a quick background check before they're able to enter the building. And what else is in that COPS grant? Let me think for a second. Additional cameras as needed across the district. So, that's something that we're looking to... We've been working with our principals, walking around the buildings, to see if there's any blind spots or where additional cameras might be needed. Sites grant. The acronym is there. You can see what it stands for. That's what Mrs. Colley and Mrs. Hannenberg were speaking about. That is in inclusive technology. Those are the communication devices that our special education students utilize to be able to communicate. So, it's a grant that we received. It's over several years. I believe it's four years that we're working with this organization, and they're gonna provide professional development to our teachers. And then we have our rod grants. That's what we use to purchase or to upgrade our boiler systems in each of our buildings, and we pay a percentage of that. Teacher climate and culture grant. That's what Mrs. DeBonis spoke about, that she applied for. It's competitive grant. We've had it this school year, and we're actually also qualified for next school year as well. They just informed us. So, this school year, we're able to purchase monitors, wireless mice, and standing desks for our teachers, and a docking station as well. We have committees that Mrs. DeBonis leads with our teachers, and we're looking to see how to use the funds best for next school year. Environmental grant from Recycling Utilities Authority. So, Smith School received this grant. They purchased recycling cans on wheels, so it's easier for our students to go around the building. They purchased signs like Falcons Recycle with, you know, all pride symbols, Falcon symbols around. And they are... Purchased materials for one of those plastic cap art projects that's going to be posted outside in their outside nature area, their classroom area. Local recreation improvement grant. Mr. Karati and myself actually applied for that one, and we received $81,000... Or we're going to be receiving $81,000. And that is going to go towards funding our... The renovation of our K to 6 playgrounds, along with what is budgeted for through maintenance, capital reserve. Maintenance reserve? Capital reserve. NJIP, New Jersey Inclusion Project Systemic Change Grant. We actually applied for this last school year, did not get it. Mrs. Colley applies for this. So, she applied again for this school year. And what it does is you work with this organization to provide the least restrictive environment for our special education students. So, they work with our staff for co-teaching purposes, having our students stay in the general education... Having our special education students stay in the general education classroom environment wherever possible, and they provide the training for our staff to be successful. And then things to celebrate from this past school year. So, I do get the fun stuff. Our turf field and lights. So, we are proud to share that the goal is for next week, start using our turf field and lights. They... The rain, this, over the, you know, last... The next couple of days are holding us up a little bit. The fencing is being completed as we speak. The visitor bleachers have been put in, and the grounds have been cleared. Much of the grounds have been cleared, and they're going to be hydroseeding quite soon. Washington School has been renovated. Forget how long ago. It seems like ages ago, but that was this past school year, that we're able to utilize the classrooms upstairs for Washington School and Coolidge School, as well as still currently being worked on. Flooring at the middle school, high school. It seems like years ago, but we did the... We redid the flooring, the tiles with the SB to brighten up and design our middle school, high school. The media center at Smith School. That floor was re-tiled, along with the, you know, the drop ceiling and lights were completed. So, that way, we kind of spruced up the media center at Smith School. Here in this building, there's a new staff bathroom upstairs, so that way, our staff members do not have to walk all the way down here to use the restroom. Closet and cafeteria, that's here in this building as well, for storage for suit service. We did the crosswalks in front of the middle school, high school. It's probably one of the proudest things that we did, that we're proud of, because our students are actually using it. So, they're parking in the lots, they're parking on the street. We have the crossing guard there. And everyone is utilizing that crosswalk that is right in the center and walking into our building. We started exemplary Falcons at our Board of Ed meetings to honor our high school students. Washington has... They started a monthly Stars newsletter that has been shared out with their parents. We also had the Centennial Celebration this past school year. We did youth mental health first aid at our parent partnership nights, very well received by our parents that participated in that program. Two, three of our buildings maybe have Falcon desk sensory rooms for our students who will utilize them. We started those two clubs, FBLA and DECA, business clubs here at the high school, and they went on several trips already so far this year. Work-based learning is what Mrs. McCarthy spoke about last school, at last board meeting, for our special education students that have reached the age of 16 to start their vocational training. We are starting... We're looking to start an Athletic Hall of Fame. We actually have our meeting tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, here at the middle school, high school media center, to discuss moving forward with our Athletic Hall of Fame. And we've improved in our chronic absenteeism and NJSLA numbers as part of our district goals, and we definitely have shown improvement. I will get those numbers out to the community, but we're really excited about that. I will say, our principals have worked very hard on those items. We spoke about Amplify Visits. Our seal of bilinguism, we had 30 students taken past our seal of bilinguism. Last year, we had 13, so that's a huge increase in our numbers. Our high school guidance department started their monthly newsletters to our parents, and hopefully, that is beneficial to our families, to let them know what's happening across our district. We're continuing with Teen Mental Health First Aid. That's what our grade 10 students... We're doing it every year. We have certified staff who are able to instruct in this program, and it teaches our 10th graders what to do if they're concerned about a peer. Kindergarten screenings. Hello's is a program that Mrs. DeBonis spearheaded, and it's for new students that arrive in the middle of the school year. And they get assigned a peer buddy, they get a tour of the building, and it just kind of formalized, so that way, we're making sure that when our students start mid-year, they're not lost. And they have support. Yeah, we did a lot of common assessment work at the high school with our departments. And this is the first year our kindergarten classes did a community field trip, where they visited the firehouse, the police station, the library, to learn more about their community. We had formal vertical and horizontal articulation meetings this year. Again, this was our directive for curriculum and instruction, Mrs. DeBonis. Three times per year, she met with those grade levels to allow them time to speak to one another about their instruction, about the students, about what's working and what's not working. Amplify was a success in K to 3. That's why we're moving it up to grade four. We had a new math program this school year in K to 6 that our teachers seem to be very happy with. Our middle school, high school, Ms. Olivero, Ms. O., our tier-two counselor here, she created a mental health and wellness webpage as a resource for our students and families. We're celebrating instant decision days here at the high school. And we have new Verkata cameras and security access, door access controls that I spoke about. And that is the end of our budget presentation. Any questions?
Any questions from the board now? Public will open up in a couple of minutes.
I have a question. Special ed, I don't need to know the price tag, but how many are added this year? Because I didn't see that unless I was intending to mention the appropriations of what...
Yeah, that's not broken down to PowerPoint. I think I have it in the... In the advertise... On the advertised budget, there is... Breaks down the... Our enrollment. And you can see from... I think that's two prior years, the current year and a year before. I could show you that.
You said that the municipal leaders were in...
No, that's for another day. That's for another day. That's for another day. Not today.
I didn't hear what you said the first time. It's like you're mumbling. Are we having ribbon-cutting ceremonies at the field?
We are aiming for fall. So, for our fall season, we will be planning a ceremony, some type of ceremony.
So, thank you for all the work you did, ready for the budget committee. A total of questions slash comments. You raised taxes roughly 3.4%, like $23 a month. I'm just wondering, looking forward... I'm just wondering, looking forward, if that last referendum where we wanted the middle school to be built, what the actual number would be? Because my guess is it's not going to be much higher than what it is here. So if we can kind of remember this information back in 2025, here's what it was, here's what it would have been. So when we go forward for the next one, hopefully sometime in the future, we can give people actual numbers so they can see the minimal effect and the benefit they're going to get. But really, can we miss the bone on that one? But I don't think it would have been much higher. But great job everything you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that something that you can really give us publicly first?
Yes. That's a good guess.
Those were, we, we had the numbers when we were, when we were going out for the referendum back then, how much it would cost the average house. Now, in this tax impact is the general fund, the operating budget, but also the debt service. So the debt service number is lower because we were able to achieve savings from interest earnings. So that made the impact less. So they give you projections when it went out and was that December of 22? Yeah, December of 22. I don't have that right in front of me, but we did have what the, what the average cost would be on that amount of money with the building in there. And then, you know, they're not, they're trying to predict how much they're going to make in interest and stuff to go back to the taxpayers. But we had actual, we had, we had a decent amount come in which reduced the impact. I could, I mean, I could, I could get it for you. It's not going to affect this budget, but I could get it for you.
Just to know for people to start paying attention to real dollars coming out of your pocket.
Yeah, it was, I mean, right. It was definitely, it was definitely less than what we were, what we were projecting. I mean, I, it's the two because one got defeated, so I'm looking at March of 23, but it was definitely different, definitely less than what was actually said. You'd have to project a lot of it. It's just, it's, it's not actual numbers, so, because it was a lot higher. I think we were at forty-some. Can't remember now. I used to remember a lot better years ago.
Okay. Then at this time, we will transition back to our seats. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. All right, well, it's not text messages, so.
Wait, what are three quarters?
Mark, how you doing?
Good, how you doing? Say again? Yeah, it's crew major. Get to be verified. It was a pole, wasn't it? Ooh, boy.
Is it still raining?
It's still that up as soon as I got.
All right.
Why can't I call and say, "There?" No, I didn't. We've got so much to do. All right. Okay. Where are we?
Um? Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
The budget only.
Motion.
Second, please.
There's a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? You respectfully decline? Okay, seeing as there are none.
Motion.
Can I have a motion to close?
Mic motion, second.
Mic motion and Sylvia's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Nobody? Okay. We're not doing reports, right? Because you guys don't want to do your reports tonight, right? Save them for Wednesday? Okay. No reports, no agenda items. Okay. Have to go over here for a moment. Okay. So does anyone have any questions regarding the board action items? Okay. Seeing none? No questions? You don't have anything to say? Okay, education and curriculum?
For the field trips, we have our fourth through sixth graders, they're going to come here to this athletic, to our new athletic field at the middle school, high school for their field day. So we are doing something different this school year. Our K to three students are going to have field day at their, in their, at their building, at their own fields. And our upper grade students will be able to assist. Our fourth through sixth grade students are all going to come here and they're going to compete against one another. And our thought is to build school pride, have them add up, you know, calculate points, add them up and, and kind of see who like, you know, who's going to win. So our PE teachers have worked really hard on this and they have all the events planned and we're excited for that. So that's one of our field trips. The other one is our MD classroom at Franklin, visiting the firehouse. And then our middle school, high school, going to our elementary schools to promote marching band, color guard and the choraleers to our sixth grade students. Point five three is a new student and this is the program that this student was attending. So we're going to continue with that program.
Budget and finance, Ms. Traverso? Yeah, if you want. Anybody have any questions?
If you might, I know I put some updates on the, the budget notes, but if you want to just go down, because there's a lot of stuff on here. It used to be, you know, May was our reorganization meeting. We do some of that action in January. This is the rest of it that gets us ready for the school year, 25, 26, July 1. So from like dot 10, oh, I guess you can start from 108 through 120, 120, 121 are all annual approvals. There's a lot of professionals in there too. Their proposals are attached, all within budgeted funds. Any questions on those?
Through the chair. Is this the, Ray, is this what I was just asking you about, the shared costs, what it would be to rent? Is that in here?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
All right, so 122 is, just let me update you on that. I, I, there is a report attached here. So the food service management company proposals were required every five years to officially go out for proposals. So it's per state regulations, they have it all formatted. An ad goes in the newspaper and then the companies call up for the proposal or the specs. And there's also bidding services that will reach out to whoever signed up with them. So it went out to three food service management company that asked for it and also went to one bidding service. And only one food service management company returned a proposal on the due date and was Pomtonian. So this whole proposal is, is based on that. So again, three asked for it, including Pomtonian, and only one responded. And that's our current provider and I'm recommending that they be approved for this year, next year. 123 is the parent organizations. 124 is the budget we just reviewed with all the fund totals and amounts that we, like the enrollment down towards the end, the enrollment, health costs and bank cap that will increase the taxes or for the, to support the budget. This is all required information that needs to be in there. 125 is to replace all the fencing around the track and both also around the, the current athletic facility, the whole field. The fences were falling apart and needed to get replaced. 126 and 127 kind of go hand in hand. So 126 was the company that did all the work on the field and part of their work was because the long jump and the high jump are included in the field part, they needed to redo them or put the concrete and track surface in. So what we're able to do is Field Turf, who actually installed the actual artificial turf field, also has a contract to do the recoding of the athletic track surfaces. So Dakota says, okay, we're not going to do that. We're going to give you $55,000 back on the contract. So we're able to add that to Field Turf. So the base number there is 287, which is to do the, the whole six lane track. And then 37,103 is to do the long jump and, I'm sorry, pole vault areas. The total cost is 324, but we're getting back 55,000 from Dakota. So again, this all falls within the budget amount we just did. 128 is five items that we need to dispose of that are no longer needed in the facility department. Three are obsolete and broken and two, we're going to try to sell and get some money for them. 129, we just opened bids for solid waste removal because that increased a lot. We made some changes to our container sizes and so forth. So we just did a bid. It's going to be actually for three years and then I could redenew it for another two. I'm currently reviewing the bids with the attorney and I think everything will be in place. So probably tomorrow I'll have these numbers inserted in all the blanks. And 1/30 is our school physician renewal. Any question on those items?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, can we ask? Did we decide where we're putting the fence? The fence is replaced here on the athletic field, right?
Yes, the, the one around the, the track is in the same spot.
We're not moving it back? We're just keeping where it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other one is, you know, more along our property lines or where we can put the field, pretty much where the fence was. We moved it in a little bit.
Through the chair, I have a question. The other company, who were the other companies who, with Pomtonian?
The name is Met, Met Nutriserve is like, is one company. And the other one was a company, Southwest Foods, they're out of Arizona. And actually, they're the ones that came in for the, there's actually a, a tour of the facilities here, the kitchen area. And actually, it was Pomtonian and the Southwest Food Service came in to view the area, but they didn't submit a bid. But again, they're, they're based out of Arizona.
Okay. Interesting. Any other questions? Facilities and operations.
Through the chair.
Michael?
Oh, on F2425 dot 10, is there any way we can all go through that and see what needs to be raised? Because, just because of the cost of what we put into the, to the buildings, to the fields, the insurances, I feel like they're a little low. But I, is that something we could discuss?
Well, just remember that on, after the, the three salary ones, the rest of them, four through 15, that's the rate for every four hours of use. The only one that has a full day rate is the auditorium, $800. So if you want to use, say, the athletic field, it's for the whole day, you know, eight hours is $1,400, not seven. So yes, we can, the facility, the facility committee, we looked at this a while ago, but we could, I mean, we could look at it again at our next meeting and see if they need to be increased. We don't have a, a huge requests. We are getting a few for the auditorium. A couple of dance studios have, have used our facilities. You know, once one does, then the other one sees it and they start renting. But we're not a large auditorium. It's 500 seats here, so we don't draw the large crowds. There's other schools that have larger auditoriums than we do. So, you know, it's hard to be in the business of renting our facilities. I really don't even like doing the few that we do because it's just wear and tear in the buildings and the buildings don't get a chance to rest. But I agree with you. You, you know, put, to put them, put, make the, possibly make it higher and if they really want to use it, then, you know, they paid additional costs. But we can look at that.
Thank you.
Wait, through the chair to piggyback on that. Who's renting it? Is it our community members like?
No.
No, so it's outside?
It's a couple outside now, it's a couple outside dance studios. I think we're up to two. We even got one for one other day. But two of them have been using the last couple of years.
Okay.
No field, field requests. It's really rec. Once in a while we get a request. Yeah, once in a while we get a request, you know, other ones for, for this auditorium, but they come back, like one the other day came back and they wanted, you know, a, a build, a room used for like, I think it was like seven or 800 people, like we don't have that. So a lot of times we're using the building or rec's using it. So it's very hard to just rent out.
Through the chair. When these dance groups come in and use the auditorium, does it involve using classrooms and do we charge them the additional rate for that?
Yeah, we see what they're, what they're looking for, but yes, they'll use the auditorium and they have changing rooms where they use the chorus room and our band room and whatever, but that we base it based on these fees and they'll pay, they'll pay all of that. They pay if they need to use the lighting and sound, they'll pay for a person to, to use that as well. They have to pay for a special police officer if they're over a certain number. So they, they do pay. The new facility program gives them all, all those fees when they're putting it in and we go over with them and, and they pay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have nothing under policy. Negotiations?
Through the chair. Is there something we can discuss? Because I have no idea what the...
We're discussing this in closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, personnel.
Personnel is P2425, I'm sorry, P2425 dot 75 through P2325 dot 85.
Point 75 is a resignation of one of our powers that recently, actually just recently started. Maternity leave, point 77. So number one is a middle school Spanish teacher for next school year. Over 18 years, or I think 18 years experience doing this position in another district and is actually a little bit of a pay cut. Two is a power professional. There might be several more by Wednesday because I know I am interviewing a, a couple candidates tomorrow. Point 78 are stipend positions. Do you see any revisions to our extended school year staff? There's always revisions as people decline late or they sign up late. And then you'll see our coaches, so head girl soccer coach, tennis, boys soccer coaches, football cheerleading coaches, cross country, head volleyball, assistant volleyball, co-assistant volleyball, I should have just said volleyball coaches. And number 13, I believe, was just omitted from the climate and culture committee, so she's, that person is added on. Point 79 to point 83 is what was reviewed in closed session last, over the last couple of months. We're going to close for point 84 and point 85.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair. On P2425 seven eight, number seven. I know that she was a competition coach. Are we going to replace that or is it not needed anymore?
I'm not sure.
Does anyone want to do committee meetings, committee reports tonight? Sorry, or you want to wait till one? Okay. Any liaison reports for tonight? Wait. Okay. Correspondence? Can I do one of them? All business? New business?
Yeah, just one item under all business. Last meeting, I mentioned that on the Bergen County School Board's meeting, May 29th, they're going to be honoring Ms. Traverso and Ms. Zottorelli. So I'll reach out to the board members, whoever, I think you could register yourself, but if they didn't, I could register for you. So I'll send an email out for that.
Congratulations. Okay. Any new business? Do you have any business, too?
Yeah, Leonard Beals, go.
Leonard Beals? Mr. Karat?
So just a couple of things of note. One, we're going to need a meeting, I don't know exactly what day yet, but the next, the next two weeks, we have a bid opening for the front, the front renovations, part of the referendum on May 13th. So we'll need time to review the bid, have the attorney review it. So I was going to look at seven, the 15th, however, there is a concert that night and then the following week, I may be off a day or two. So I'm trying to figure out what day I could do this. So just be, look out for emails, I'll send it out. If we could maybe have an early meeting, but it won't just be for that bid. We're going to try to line up now that the budget will be approved Wednesday, to line up some of our products to get the contractors scheduled for early summer work. So I'd like to get some of them done as well. So we're not waiting to the June meeting.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforesaid subjects, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforesaid subjects will be made public at the time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
There you go. Got it? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
You too, thank you.
I wish I could, I've been around seven years.
Of course.